Just sign it once.
That's all, you just need your name on there.
You didn't have a separate sheet for work workshop and yeah. Alright, ready to go? Are we recording, are we recording?
Recording, we're actually ready to go.
Alright, it is six thirty, uh, evening of November first, twenty twenty-one, and this is a regular meeting of the Arlington City Council. I'm Mayor Rich Nagel and I will be presenting. I'll call a meeting to order and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and welcome everyone. And we'll do the roll call. The council member Bus.
Here.
Council member Sharpie.
Here.
Council member Batchor.
Here.
Council member Morgan.
Here.
Council member Thomas.
Here.
All council members are present. Also at the table on my left is city administrator Amy Newsom. City attorney Ross Arnison will not be attending this evening. So moving on to item three, approve the agenda. Are there any agenda additions or changes?
I have two additions to the agenda. I need to add under the consent agenda for G to accept the resignation of Officer Nathan Walton from the Arlington Police Department. And then under new business number twenty-six, it'll be to approve or deny the Arledazzle Parade Route five K and their requests for assistance. This came in at about three o'clock today.
That's item twenty-six under new business, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions.
Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member Thomas to approve the agenda with the noted changes. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carried. I'll have to remember that.
Yeah, and he has a delay.
Okay. Alright, moving on to consent agenda. This evening the consent agenda consists of the following. Item A, approval of the bills. Item B, approval of October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, utility workshop minutes. Item C, approval of the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, city council minutes. Item D, approval of the December twenty-first Personnel Employee Relations Committee meeting minutes. Item E, accept resignation of community center, uh, Chris- Christina Davis. Item F, accept resignation of Sue Morissette from the Arlington Area Ambulance Service. And lastly, item G, approve the resignation of Officer Nathan Walton. That has an effective date of?
November thirteenth.
November thirteenth.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member Sharpie to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Motion carried. Item five, addressing the council. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing none, move on to announcements. There are no announcements. Communications, item seven.
In the packet you find a copy of the cemetery committee, the unapproved minutes, because the committee has not approved them. But this is part of open communication, so the council can see what happened at the cemetery committee. At the end, council member Bus can say something about the committee meeting if he would like to, give an update. There's a letter in there from the Arlington Area Ambulance Association. They're dissolving the ambulance association. The funds are coming in to the ambulance operating budget. That is a resolution accepting that money is on tonight's agenda. We also have the letter that came along with all the texts, the donation to replace that Buck Thomas plaque at the sportsman's park.
I could ask later, but I'll ask now. Was it deemed that the sign could not be repaired?
Correct.
Okay. And this, uh, the total amount of the donation?
Total's the amount to replace it.
Total's the amount of replacement, okay. Alright, any questions on the communications? Hearing none, we'll move to reports. Annual report from the Arlington Fire Relief Association.
Tim, would you like to give us like a little update of what happened throughout the year on the Fire Relief Association? Just a little something?
Uh, as of right now, we're, we're down to twenty-eight members on the relief. Uh, we have thirteen members in deferred. And so far our funds have been, uh, doing very well. Um, since we were up around that eighty-seven thousand this year in our adjustments, so it's been doing very well.
How about fundraisers and what did you purchase this year?
Fundraisers, um, we've been doing our drive-through pork chop. Drive is our big one. And we served five hundred and thirty-five pork chops in about an hour and thirty-five minutes, I think it was, something like that. Uh, did very well. Um, we purchased, um, an enclosed trailer for the fire department this year. And John has, John, you?
How much?
About eighteen thousand.
Into the trailer?
Yep. And we're getting that all set up right now. It's got back from the decal, which we had at the open house for you guys, uh, last month. And?
And what will the trailer be used for?
We're gonna use it, a lot of it for our brain rescue equipment going in there and generators, lighting, um, all the things that we had, kind of had between a portable trailer we had pulled. And, uh, it, it got overflowed. A lot of brain rescue equipment in there and it just got too tight. And so we went ahead and, uh, did that all up and it's gonna, it's gonna make it really easy to grab things quicker and more accessible. We're gonna have great lighting in there. Um, so now we can hook up to one trailer and go. Before at the hall we had things stacked against walls. If that guy's back, we'd have to grab all the trucks and we always had not enough room on the trucks and it, so then this is gonna make it really, really nice. So seeing more departments doing it, so we looked into it and came up and as, voted as an department and, um.
As the ambulance association?
Pardon?
As the ambulance association? Is that what voted for the trailer or the fire department?
Fire department. Uh, James has been spearheading, uh, majority of the project on that and getting, uh, the racking and everything set up and get everything moved over there shortly, so that's a nice enhancement. So it's been, the relief has been very active. We had our, uh, for fire prevention, like we did the drive-through, then we also did, uh, silver meals from all the restaurants around for tips and stuff. And then we put batteries and some jet smoke detectors on. This year we did fire quite a few smoke detectors that were way outdated. A lot of smoke detectors missing batteries. Homeowners are surprised. Uh, yes, it's been, it's been a busy, active year.
No, that's not for you. I'm just rearranging.
Okay, anything else?
Thanks, Tim. Thank you guys. Appreciate it always. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item B, October Public Works Department report. Kirby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Um, so discussion on the lawnmower. We shouldn't need to do that. Uh, on the front end of that, I had asked about a warranty and was told there is none anymore. Uh, they called back and said, yes, there is. So they took care of that.
It's under warranty?
Yeah.
Good.
Good. What, so what wa- what went wrong with it?
So that mower has, we opted for the bigger engine on it and it meets a certain tier, I guess, of emissions. And it has a, uh, carbon burnout, turbocharge burnout mechanism on it, so it burns out all the carbon. Anyways, that just had a internal failure. The whole thing was shot. So it's going to be an expensive repair. I think. If that's what it is, sure.
There's a big component to this here.
Yeah, it's a big thing in there. Yeah, they said, they actually said, to our credit, we have put on, nobody else had bought one of those, put on five hundred hours without having to get rid of it. We put on two thousand.
Wow.
Before we had that issue, so.
So it has been a problem with it.
They gave us a lot of kudos for taking good care of our mower, I guess, but.
Well, it's good.
Um, anyways, moving forward, I think I could try to forge with the extra five, six horsepower, get the smaller engine that doesn't have that. And it should be cheaper.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, anyways, got that figured out. Um, the sinkhole, I got a call from a resident last Friday night concerned about a hole in the road at the intersection of West Douglas and Second Avenue Northeast. Um, right there on the northeast corner of the school parking lot, in the driving lane, there was a, about a silver dollar sized hole. I forget, I wish I would have remembered her name, but I paid sure to call her back and thank her. She lives on the corner there. Um, anyways, thank you to that resident.
Mrs. Newbarth, Lorraine Newbarth.
Right.
Yeah. Um, she called and was concerned, didn't know what it was. Uh, so we had myself, people service show up to look at the manholes next to it and we found that hole and uh, found out it was substantial. It was eight feet deep by ten feet wide.
What caused it?
Uh, there was three storm pipes. Two of them had come apart at joints and then another one just collapsed, just old.
It happens.
Old pipes.
I, I looked into that.
Washing the contents down with the rain.
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah.
Wow.
So that rain sucked vacu- you know, it's like a vacuum under the road and those big storms, it just sucked all the material right away. So thank God that lady called, cause vehicles sure could have wound up. And school was out during MEA, so there was no bus traffic there either, so that was good. So, thank goodness, uh, Kirby came the next Monday. They came to look at it Saturday when I called them and they were there the next Monday and had it fixed. So yeah, I feel like we avoided something there. Thank, thank goodness. Okay, so we covered that. Uh, other than that, you know, we've been busy with some boulevard restoration from, uh, stump, stump removal and sidewalk removals and repairs. That's finished up. Um, of course, street sweeping leaves. We've been chasing quite a few leaves already. But there's also a lot to come yet for November first. Um, I hope the snow stays away long enough that we can get the s- the rest of the leaves picked up, uh, when they fall. I had the boilers inspected here at the, um, cleaning center. Uh, they're all current and working well. Compost site and the rest of the buildings, the heat's working at this point and, uh, filters are new and changed out and we're ready to go for the cooler weather. Compost site has kept us busy. Uh, burned the brush pile a couple of weeks back. Uh, that seemed to go well.
Can I ask a question about compost?
Yeah.
Is it, when I got a drive out there, aside from the brush pile that got burnt, it looks like the other piles are getting big. I mean, are we getting to the point where, where some maybe needs to be hauled away? Or is it getting?
Probably. I mean, it's, yeah. I'm, I'm kind of waiting for, you mean like the compost?
Yeah, the, the wood chips, the.
It's big.
The compost, which starts out to be.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that too, how to, how to.
So it doesn't get away from us?
Dig into that or advertise or something, but been waiting, compost, compost a little more.
Mm-hmm.
There is some good stuff there that I have separated already, but, uh, there's a lot of other good stuff coming. Just needs a little more time. It all shrinks as a compost. You get room that way, but, uh.
I don't think.
Something to look into with it, cause I don't know how we're gonna get rid of it otherwise.
I don't think people are aware. I don't think people are aware of the.
Yeah.
Nice black dirt that's down there.
I don't think so either.
Too bad it can't be screened somehow to get, to get the sticks and the plastic.
Yeah. Yeah, it i- it is actually the best I've seen of that.
Yeah.
I took a few loads to my house and, uh, had very few things that pull out of there.
Yeah.
We should get the word out, yeah. That's a good point. I've been thinking about that too.
Okay.
It'll be coming up, the, do something about that. Um, still waiting on the loader and the blower repairs by peeps. Um, spent several times I've contacted him. And it sounded like at the end of last week he finally pulled them in and started working on them. He told me he got inundated with harvest equipment, that he kind of had to push us back. And at the beginning I was like, yeah, okay, we're getting by, you know, without our loader. I don't need the blower yet, but I kind of put it to him last week that it's got, we need it back.
Yeah.
Um, so I anticipate having those back soon. Uh, it's kind of fall work. We've got the water shut off in the parks, sports and park blowout. Um, I feel like we had another great season with our part-time help. Those guys are awesome. They don't get enough credit. Kenny Perschall, Willie Rao, Brody Service helped out this year and I'm super blessed to have good workers that, that really do a lot for town. People might not recognize, so shout out to them. Yeah, that's about it.
Before I forget, Lori Thomas wants Buck's plaque when we replace it. She wants the old one.
She wants it what?
She wants the old one.
Oh, okay.
So don't just get rid of it.
Okay. Alright.
Good, anything for Kirby? Alright.
Okay, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Item C, October ambulance department manager Whiteley. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, now it is. Okay. Um, the mentorship that we're doing with our students and staff, it's going actually really well. We're hoping to get, um, the students that need to pass their test all taken care of by December. Uh, with that in mind, we'll be offering a ENT refresher course for those that need to recertify in January. So if by chance they do not pass and they need to take that refresher course in order to take the exam again, um, we'll kind of, oh, kind of kill two birds with one stone on that, so. Um, and then we'll reach out to other services too to find out if there's anybody or any ENTs or EMRs that need to recertify. Um, so this isn't just a, a class that's just gonna be offered to the ambulance service itself. It's something that will offer it to other people as well. So kind of have other services utilize that opportunity. Um, let's see here, the diesel truck, yep, it's back, it's fixed. The number seven injector is better. Thing was running kind of rough and not so great. Um, due to the.
And you did check locally to fix that?
Yes.
Just so people know. She, she tried to get it fixed locally.
I called like six people. Nobody wanted to touch that truck. And it kind of, it, it was a bummer because typically when we take it to Jerry's, their diesel mechanic can take care of those things, but he was out for an entire week. So we had to wait. Um, I, I didn't feel very confident in that truck, especially transporting patients. Um, just the.
To Fargo or something?
Yeah. Short time I drove it, I really was not impressed with the way it was running and I did not want to set our service up for failure. So I just made the executive decision to pull that truck out of service just for safety reasons. Um, even though it was still drivable, I just, like I said, um, I don't think it would have been really good for the patient side of things and actually responding to nine-one-ones and transfers. Um, but that has been fixed, it's back in service. We're good to go on that. Um, on the twenty-third, uh, we hosted our annual medical director variance training. This is an annual training that our staff has to go through in regards to cardiac arrest management, um, medication and administration and trauma. This is all mandated by our current medical director. Uh, so we just have to make sure we go through all the skills and competencies once a year and so we were able to do that on the twenty-third. Um, we didn't get a chance to get the SIBO driving course done just because of time constraints. Uh, we were gonna have to end up rescheduling it. So we, we didn't get that part done. Um, I did notify the staff to the, the particular amount of staff that are vaccinated with the COVID nineteen, whether it's Pfizer, Moderna, or Johnson and Johnson, that public health has been, um, hosting vaccination booster clinics. And then also to, to locate where exactly they can get those done, also to refer to the Minnesota Department of Health website too. So there are other places that are able to administer those booster shots. Uh, finished up with the Sibley's football games. Uh, we participated at the Highland rodeo. We did their EMS standby services. Um, and then kind of the last but not least kind of thing, I did apply for the fire department subs grant, um, to try and get a new monitor. So hopefully I'll hear back the latter part of November, early December to see if we are a recipient for that. And there will be another grant opening up early December that I'm gonna try and get some funds for an ambulance, so. That's where I'm at. Any questions? Nope.
Nope.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, item D, people's service September report. Evening Lee.
Good evening. You're on. There. I thought it was on. Um, so some additions to that report. Um, you know, when that manhole collapsed here, the other day, last weekend, we checked that sewer that we've been having issues with, that's, that's right there. It was clean as could be. So it's on the report that back in September we did that jetting. That's when we had the sewer back up. And it seemed like every month we've been having an issue with it.
Mm-hmm.
Now it was clean. So hopefully the words got out that you can't be putting that stuff on the sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Cause we're gonna have big issues with that.
After all the visits.
Hmm?
After all of our visits.
Yeah.
And three visits we made and writers and three stories.
Mm-hmm.
Hopefully it's, it's over with. Hydrants got flushed in September. Uh, a few months ago we worked with Jake. We were looking at some of the loading rates in the water plant. We turned down the flows that was coming into it. And we, we're having better removals of the iron in the water. I know it's really flushed hydrants, they're, they're, they're pretty clean. So that's good.
Mm-hmm.
Lot less water complaints I've noticed too, because you're, if you're getting that into the system, it's eating up the chlorine, it's causing a chlorine demand. Once you lose that demand, that's when you get the smelly water and the complaints, you start getting, or it smells like chlorine. It's not that there's too much chlorine, it's cause the chlorine went away. And when it starts coming back, you get the smell. Um, what else? The guys finished last week, right before the rain, uh, hauling all the wild salves, sojol. They held a hundred and ninety-nine volts off this one. We emptied out, so, wow, we've had a lot done.
Wow. That's a lot.
Yeah, then this, and usually, usually it ends up being rainy and then, and, and you know, and the farmer's getting impatient and it's not getting, you know, and it's getting close to Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
That's the area looks to be better, I mean, two weeks, then, then two hold it all out, so.
That's a lot of tractor driving.
A lot of tractor driving. And they would split shift, leave it Corbin in the morning and then Corbin would work and he was working till seven-thirty in the morning, every week, so.
Wow.
Yeah, that's off to them. So, um, anyway, on this, uh, water tower?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Talk about the green stuff growing on the water tower.
Yeah. So I d- I know it was probably fifteen, sixteen, eighteen months ago or whatever it was washed. And I, I've also been talking about it too. Part, problem is, is this year was really hot. We had a lot of ninety-degree days. When that water comes out of the ground, gets pumped into that tower, it's only a stand pipe in the bottom of the bowl, about eighteen inches high. So it, uh, the water's fifty-three degrees when it's going in the bottom of the tower. It actually stratifies in there, cause there's no mixing. So that cold water stays on the bottom. It's like taking a bottle of pop or whatever out of the fridge and it sweats.
Mm-hmm.
There's many times in summer I walked down to the water tower, I thought it was raining. There was so much water coming off of that. So that's been wet all summer long. Then it's attracting dust and it may really be blowing around and then it goes. And I know it was green. I looked at it tonight. Now that it froze, it turned black. So, so it's algae growing on the water tower. So it turned black now and hopefully a lot of it washes off through, if it killed it, so hopefully through the winter, a lot of it washes back off. Some of the solutions, we, we've talked about it many years ago and put a mixing system in and mix the water in the tower, so it's, so it's all even temperature top to bottom, cause it gets warm on top. It's just like being, it's just like a lake, you know? And then that, that helps all the water quality, because it started, it never, changes out that top layer of water.
And the company that did clean it last year did apply a chemical to keep that green stuff from growing on there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no guarantees. We'd have to pay to have it done again.
I was, I was looking back. The power was repainted in two thousand and sixteen and I remember two thousand and nineteen, that thing was horrible looking at it. You know, here we are here.
After having a plane to get starting on there again.
That's starting. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
How much is it there, next to us for the after cost?
Ten thousand dollars, maybe ten thousand.
And it, we were quoted fifty-five hundred to clean it off again.
We talked about it. And. Yeah.
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 So, and the mixing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, why keep going through the same thing?
So, uh, it, with, and this is the same guy I talked to. I know, Rich, you remember, years ago we talked about that? Well, then I was found out that they didn't have it approved from the Minnesota Department of Health. They were using a, a blow-off off an air compressor to push it out the tower and mix it that way. There was kind of a safety thing with that, you know, if you get oil coming out of the water, it's gonna push up there. We don't want that in the water. I know they, that they have a system now in the city above Ford. They'd like to look at that, see if they're happy with that, you know? But we can, like, here's other options.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they put one in Lester Prairie that is a big mixer in the bottom of that. Same sized tower here runs twenty-four seven. Cause they have a, a company came in and they built a building with forty-two foot sidewalls and the sprinkler system's thirty-eight feet off the ground. So that takes some head pressure away from the tower and they gotta be able to flow some of the gallons for fifteen minutes, so we have to keep that tower a little half full all the time, cause it can never run down. Which runs into issues in the winter time. So they got a mixer in there straining that up all the time.
So communities that do have that type of mixer, they, they don't have the problem with algae growing in the?
Less.
On the tower? I mean, it's.
It should be less.
It should be less, but.
Cause you gotta, you know, even temperature.
Yeah, yeah.
You're getting close to the ambient temperature, nothing's gonna, it shouldn't sweat and shouldn't spit. It could be an answer. Other towns paint the bottom dark.
Yeah, that's pretty common.
See it? You know?
Oh, sure.
Baseball wouldn't look too bad.
No.
We can't have a baseball, but we'd have to re.
No, that wouldn't look good at all. But.
Redo that, but.
But I think that mixing system might be something to look into, but, oh, cool on it. Cause otherwise, like you said, if it's, and it keeps going up.
Yeah.
Yes, it's a.
Higher, it's higher than, it was forty-two hundred dollars.
Now it's fifty-five.
Now it's, yeah, over five thousand from the same company, you know? It's just, and then I remember back then we had bids for forty-two, I don't know, six.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, if you're gonna just throw money like that, yeah.
I'd rather get a solution.
We should, yeah, find a solution to it to help it out along, cause, yeah.
Yeah, if it faces it out for a longer periods of time to go there, it could be better.
I mean, being as white as it is, the way it's going, it's like every two years.
Yes.
You know? So.
Just make the tower green. But you don't have to pay.
It'll just let it turn that way.
Sprinkle in there.
So.
We should look into that mixing system, I think. Maybe if you could give us some bids, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, we should look into something with that. To see what kind of options are out there for that.
And see, see how successful is other.
What, what works and talk to other towns.
Mm-hmm.
Since we're known for our baseball water tower, I think it's something we do need to keep looking.
Yep. I think that's something we could look into and plan and budget for.
Yeah.
Nice.
Yep.
Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
I do too. So, okay. Uh, update on Northland drying. I wanted to recharge the weed today. I didn't get a chance. I was stuck in Lester Prairie. And my plan is to s- start discharging this after Thursday. Run a little bit every day till it's done. We'll monitor the plant. If the plant starts going down, shut it off, when I come back, you know, maybe do a couple of times a day, a little bit here and there, and get it done, get it out of there, so.
You're talking about emptying the tank?
Yeah, emptying that tank, yeah.
And are they gonna fill it up again?
They need to plug all the holes. This is a one-time deal with, that we have with them and there's all kinds of lines in their ground going in there yet.
Yeah.
They, they don't know where to go and, you know, it was, but they need to either cut them or plug them, one of the two.
Did you say you were gonna start emptying it this week?
I'd like to, yeah. Thursday, we take our samples Thursday morning, our sample is off.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's set till Wednesday, so we can just, then we do. I just don't wanna pick up something like a mownie or something or whatever, I, because it's ten times stronger than, than that sort of wastewater is.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
It's just like a se- a septic truck going around pumping out septic tanks out of the country and then dumping it into your plant. Is it, it's the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
It's a shock load, you know? As long as we can run it through storm, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So then who, who's gonna monitor them, actually plugging or heading though as long as we're being sure, is that the city's responsibility, you know, you guys are gonna play a role in that as well?
We'll, we'll help them with it, but yeah, once it's, it's, they need to plug. They can make pluggy, just put in a terminal, plug the lines. We just gotta purchase it. They just don't know how many there is and down there and what size.
Mm-hmm.
Until it's.
Until it ends up, yeah.
Until it's empty.
Yeah.
And, and we're also looking at other opti- options that they, to, not, that, that they wouldn't have to use that too, you know? And that's where I gave them direction to talk to this, this person from the NPCA.
Mm-hmm.
And that'll give them direction or a path they need to take. Or that, I, I, I would much rather have it, but they're not even involved in the city, they'd be like Seneca, they dip here, they own corn, silage, everything, air and angles.
Yeah, okay.
It is no different than, um, City of Arlington, the bile salts, the sludge that we haul up. We, city has nothing to do with it, we report to the state, and they would end up having to report to the state also, you know?
Hmm.
And that, and then if there is a problem from the state to us, if there is a complaint, complain to the state, they're regulated, yeah, so.
Hmm. I like that idea.
Yeah, and then the ci- then the city's out of it and just move the complaint down to on the line and make it, make it their problem.
Well, it looks like the council's looking towards people's service for an update on Northland drying's progress, because they promised that they knew what the problem was and they would work towards a remedy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I think we're going in the right direction.
Good.
I'm glad at a kind of rain that we did, it's, you know, we, they were maybe like inch and a half rain last week, but that, that's been a watering down, and they look at balance a little bit strong, it means you can pump through it, so.
Good.
And hopefully now it's getting colder, you can get the bigger ones, and it'll just fill that thing out, freeze and then they can get down and fill it, whatever they need.
I mean.
Well, first. So just by them pumping some of their water into that tank as well, even though it would be more immediate more, right? I mean, it costs them money and water.
The only thing they plan on going in there is, you know, their parking trailers on a cement pad with a drain in it, and potato juice is going in through it. And there's pipes that are coming from here and there, and it's kinda conveying rainwater into that thing. So if they can seal that, put a lid on that, you know, they, they might even have to haul it once a year, and then have nothing to do with it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and that's where, get in with the NPCA, how are they regulated? What is it? It's food, it's a food-based product, is it regulated? Can they just go haul it out on the back, or upon through where they used to have them, and then apply it back, they, they need to be permitted.
Yeah.
But the major part, when we were there that day, of the smell, one, rotting potatoes, they're gone, and, um, the contents of that pit, that, that, that stuff was very strong.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
The wind blows, it kinda turns that up and that, that's causing more problems.
Sure.
So if they get gone, they should take care of it. A lot, I, I notice there's been a lot of the cooking with that smell, so.
Good.
Good.
Think we had them in the right direction with that one, good.
So, no, we'll, we'll keep updated on it and we'll work with them and hope to just be able to, you know, that's all I have.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any questions for Lee? All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Lee.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions, um, we have second reading of ordinance three thirty-seven.
Which is the permitting process. You do not have to read it, but if you just wanna read the title, maybe you can.
Okay.
And Phil, did you change that recommendation from the council last time, the language in there?
Slight correction, sorry, three thirty.
There was, I noticed today, I looked it over and it up, is that the card?
Oh, yeah, I did change the, um, correction that the council recommended, so I think it should be good to go, um, through the council and hopefully there's no other issues.
Okay.
Okay. So it is city ordinance number three thirty-seven, an ordinance creating chapter thirty-two permitting proc- permitting process to allow regulation of the process of permits in the city of Arlington. City Council of the City of Arlington, to promote the public safety, health and welfare, hereby ordains chapter thirty-two. The Arlington Permitting Process Code shall be created, and then it goes on as follows and in detail. And, uh, all the members of the council have received it, so this is the second reading, and it will be down the line always. There's a resolution addressing the passage or adoption of it, so.
Like, if anyone has any questions or concerns about it, um, please don't hesitate to ask, I'm more willing to answer them just by why we.
Yes. Okay, any questions, anyone?
Okay.
Thank you. Again, we will take action on that a little further down. First reading of, reading of ordinance three thirty-eight, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen, the Arlington Cemetery Code, to allow the adjustment of chapter thirteen for the creation of a burial monument permit under thirteen, thirteen point zero one. The right for residents not to use a monument markers company under thirteen point oh four, requiring a land use permit for a vault and misspelling on the next word, it should be mausoleum, your S is missing. Under thirteen point oh five, and not allowing any burial without first being issued a permit from the city.
This was brought up by attorney Arnison, that in our city code, it states that someone has to have permit for a headstone. That did not exist. Attorney Arnison said we should probably have a permit, since it is in the city code that one is required. I task Phil with coming up with, uh, the changes to the city code and coming up with the permit. Since looking over the cemetery is a lot like planning and zoning, it is really a little city unto itself. So he put together a permit, which is on the agenda later, and he also made some changes to the city code, updating the city code. We will change the spelling of the word mausoleum.
Yes, I'm not, as you're all aware, I'm not, I'm not a linguist sadly.
So this is the first reading of this amendment to the code?
And so. So what do we charge him for the fee?
Zero.
Zero?
There's no, that's not addressed in this, that is addressed later on, that, that permit, but there is no fee.
So it's just a permit, you don't pay anything for it?
It's just like, uh, some other permits we have for the.
Yeah, I've seen there were others.
There was a burial permit made already.
That, well, that's what's filled out when they come in and it's marked, that's different than the headstone, that's when the casket is put in the ground.
I, I also.
Oh, so when they buy the headstone, there's just.
That's different. Now they'll have a.
There's no fee. But, and that was my question or whatever too, because there's administrative, it's time long with that.
There is the burial permit fee, which is when the casket or the urn is buried. This has to do with the monument, the headstone displaced.
There's still administrative work that's done with any time you're shopping.
That's why, did you wanna, actually, cemetery, did you, did you wanna say something, Craig, what we talked about at the sem- we talked about this at the cemetery committee?
Well.
Cemetery. And I will give people, yeah.
We had this discussion, at the same discussion at the cemetery committee, so.
So what we wanna do is we wanna lump it into.
Just that burial permit fee, is what we're calling it.
Yeah. One is, uh, pretty much here, twenty bucks here, forty bucks there, one hundred and.
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars, you know, just when you look, and when I set out, you know, personally for our church, if you wanna be buried at our church's lot, per lot, is seven hundred dollars per person. And when you look at other communities similar, we're fairly right in line, but there's like one fee, maybe two fees. So to kinda consolidate it, symbolize, aim for it, you know, justify all of it.
But why, but, but why not just include this in with that and not have two?
That's what we're doing, yeah.
That's what we're doing.
So that's why the one fee went from seventy-five dollars up to hundred, hundred and twenty-five.
So if you just, if you just have a footstone and not headstone, you're still paying the same amount of money for your burial permit. But if you get a headstone, that's fine, right?
I'd also like to chime in real quick, sorry, um, when it comes to the vaults and mausoleums, the reason why I worry into land use permits is for the fact that under the current code, it just says special permits, but it's really not defined as that. And the reason why I kind of skewed to land use is for the fact of height regulations under accessory structures under our code. As long as it meets certain height requirements, I have, it's a very simple, straightforward review, which I don't think we should charge for, it should lump it into the cemetery fee, whatever we determine, as we discussed at the, um, committee meeting. So that's, that's why I just wanna chime in, what concerns that.
So I mean, we're not gonna, not be going on inspecting also?
Um, if it comes down to, I might have to. I mean, it's a case by case study, which, to be honest with you, it's not the first time I, I mean, I have to go inspect fences in certain sheds of less than a hundred, twenty square feet. I mean, if I have to, I would, but at the same time, that's based on how we want to approach that, so I leave that to you guys.
I don't know, I mean, to me, it seems hard to do a lot. I mean, having the permit, I don't have any issues with a permit, like putting it all of, everything in the area, I think that's the right approach, but are we really gonna go inspect every store that's put in?
And what, like, when we talked a little, when we talked about it at the cemetery committee, if it's a zoning thing.
That's only mausoleums and.
Right, it's only special.
And it's, I think it'd be a little, if we just have a symbol, your headstone can be within X by X, that'd be what I'd go with, and you don't have to inspect or look or do whatever. And, and I'm all for that, but what I, what I'm afraid of, because whenever government gets involved.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I don't wanna have somebody burying someone, and then we're gonna go out there and say, you know what, you got two inches too much cement, I'll better go break that up, or do it. I mean, I don't wanna get into that. No, and I don't think that's the direction that that was intended for. I think what it was headed for is not to have a ten-foot statue of someone placed on top. Now, I gotta return that? Well, I recommend.
Let's be very clear.
Tim would probably pay for it.
That's what you get for sitting in the front row. Picked on, like.
Let's be very clear, vaults and mausoleums are a special case.
Yes.
So that's why it would require a land use, because with those, through my experience, and very clear, very minimal, where I lived in Rochester, New York, they've had mausoleum involves that were about fifteen, twenty feet long, because they were old school style, like very extravagant, stuff like that, and that would not follow our zoning code based on certain heights. But that's the only reason, that's the only thing that I would actually go out and inspect. If they're just doing a basic headstone or something like that, I'm indifferent to it, because it does not require a land use permit. It's when it comes to these extravagant vaults and mausoleums where I would have to go out to make sure, now, I'm not looking at setbacks or anything, I'm just looking at height. So they could have it like two inches from the next plot, I'm indifferent to it, it's more about how high is it going to be.
So when you bring your ten-foot statue, it's like I dig a big hole, just put it down.
Well, you might, depending on situation.
Footy is all I believe.
Okay.
So, so in here, though, it doesn't specify the size of the headstone before you were to have to.
Yeah, what is that?
Look at.
Based on accessory structures, uh, well, that, see, this is why I didn't really mention, because given that we're redoing.
It's not a building.
No. Well, I mean, if you, you have a, I mean, most headstones are about the same size, right?
Yes.
I mean, so if you say if something's bigger than that, then it might cost you a little bit more, because we have to have staff to look maybe.
I think we're overcomplicating this.
I think we are too.
We are getting way in the, yeah, weeds here.
Yeah.
This was, this was to have a record, so that if Matt has fifty thousand brothers and sisters, and you're gonna put on a per- you're gonna put on a stone, you file a permit, we have a copy of that record with the city, that you're putting a headstone out there, you use an, you use an approved company, that's what the permit is for. It says you're using an approved company, we sign off on it, we have a record of it, you got a permit for your headstone.
Who approves companies?
The city does, as long as, yeah.
Actually, those monument companies take on a lot of responsibility, and they look at the plot, they look at the adventures of the plot, they know, you know, it's.
Yes. They do. They know what can go.
They know what can.
But it's.
They approve.
Yeah.
And just to be clear, when it gets slightly complicated, if they choose not to.
If you're gonna start a company, then I'm not sure if you're approved.
If they. There you go.
If that's why I, that language, because if they choose to opt out of using a monument company, and they decide to use it themselves, that's when the city has to be a little bit more.
That's when the city has to pay attention.
Stripped about it, but most of the times, from what I've talked to the city clerk, she does a lot of these, that's effect, that's the extreme rarity, I.
We were asked recently about someone doing it themselves too, and that's how the question, the conversation with attorney Arnison came up.
Mm-hmm.
Exactly, that's where we come to.
Yeah.
See, I, I got a question, um, and you guys probably already addressed it in the, on the committee, but, uh, could, is there a reason why this couldn't be just basically incorporated into the other permit, where maybe somebody, if they weren't gonna have one, they just, you know, check a box that says not applicable? Instead of adding a complete, another, you know, paper? Because what if they go to get buried and they don't really know that you gotta have this, and then they put up their big giant thing?
Well, it's. Well, it's in, it's actually in the permit. If you look at the permit, it has checkboxes on what type of, uh, burial will you have.
Yep.
Uh, so if you're gonna have a vault for a mausoleum, you have to check that, and then from there, I take, we take the proper steps on to go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Very.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So is it necessary, though, to have this if you've already got it really incorporated in the other one? That's kinda what I'm getting at, is do we have to have two when you?
Or you're saying add it to the other one and not have two?
Yeah, basically get the footprint of what you need in order to cover this and just have it within the other one.
Sometimes barrels and headstones can be a year or two apart.
Yes, they can.
So.
And that's why the permit's more.
Okay.
That's why they're separate.
You put the body in and then you put the marker.
And it can be a while later sometimes.
Yeah.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes the markers come in first.
Sometimes it's, sometimes it's.
They're nice, and they put the stone up.
Yep.
Yeah, some people have them up for years beforehand, so.
Sure.
The board list is a case by case basis, so we have to adapt to those types of situations.
Okay, moving right along here.
Okay. Any changes? Now is your, now is your opportunity though to point out, like mausoleum is spelled wrong.
Yep, add S to mausoleum, that's the only thing I found. Anything else on ordinance three thirty-eight? Okay, that was the first reading then of that ordinance. All right. Right, resolution seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one, resolution accepting donation, designating its use.
This is the resol- this is the donation from the ambulance association, which is just going to go away, and that's how much money, they had ninety-five hundred dollars left in their account. We will put it into the ambulance operating fund for the ambulance director's request, they can use it for, oh, whatever they need to that way. Probably gonna go towards clothing, I understand will be part of it.
I'll introduce.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead, Joe.
I'll introduce resolution, uh, seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one, resolution, uh, accepting a donation from the ambulance, uh, fund.
Good.
Second.
Resolution seventy-three dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Morgan, second by council member Batchory, and it is a resolution accepting a donation, designating its use. The donation is in the amount of nine thousand five hundred forty-eight dollars and eighteen cents from the Arlington Area Ambulance Association. And it will go into the ambulance fund two oh two. Discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call. Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Batchory.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution seventy-four dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution approving the creation of chapter thirty-two permitting process, and that is the one that we had, uh, the second reading on tonight.
Second reading.
So this is just making the formal approval.
I'll introduce resolution seventy-four twenty twenty-one, uh, uh, resolution providing the creation of the chapter thirty-two permitting process.
Second.
Resolution seventy-four dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Batchory, second by council member Sharpie, and it is a resolution approving the creation of chapter thirty-two per- the permitting process. For the discussion. Yeah, vote by roll call, council member Batchory.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
So, council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution seventy-five dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution relating to designating polling place location for all elections in calendar year twenty twenty-two.
Next year's an election year, we have to designate our polling place by resolution. We should not be affected by the redistricting, county maybe, but Arlington will still remain the same. So this is a typical.
I'll make, I'll make motion for resolution seventy-five dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Resolution seventy-five dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Thomas, second by council member Batchory, it is a resolution rel- relating to designating the polling place location for. It is a resolution relating to designating the polling place location for all elections in twenty twenty-two. For the city of Arlington, the polling place will be Arlington Community Center, two oh four Shamrock Drive. Vote by roll call, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution accepting a donation, designating its use.
We have several resolutions coming up, these are all donations for the Buck Thomas plaque. I will order it tomorrow morning, once we accept all the resolutions, first one is a hundred dollars from James and Holly Craft.
I'll introduce resolution seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one, uh, resolution accepting a donation of a hundred dollars, I'll second.
Resolution seventy-six dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Sharpie, second by council member Thomas. It is a resolution accepting that donation and designating its use. The donation is in the amount of one hundred dollars from James and Holly Craft, and it goes towards replacing the Dan Buck Thomas plaque. Vote by roll call, council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one, resolution accepting a donation, designating its use.
This one is a hundred dollars from Rick and Lori Rose, also for the Buck Thomas plaque.
I'll introduce resolution seventy-seven twenty twenty-one, accepting donation and designating its use.
Second.
Resolution seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Batchelor, second by council member Thomas. It is a resolution accepting a donation, designating its use. The, the donation is in the amount of a hundred dollars from Richard and Lori Rose, and it will go towards replacing the Dan Buck Thomas plaque. Vote by roll call, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution accepting donation, designating its use.
This one is in the amount of seventy-seven oh two from Robert and Gail Thomas, for the Buck Thomas plaque.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution seventy-eight twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Resolution seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution introduced by council member Thomas, second by council member B, council member Batchelor. That is a resolution accepting donation, designating its use, donations in the amount of seventy-seven dollars and two cents from Robert and Gail Thomas for, uh, used for the Dan Buck Thomas plaque replacement. Okay, vote by roll call, council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution accepting donation, designating its use.
This one is also in the amount of seventy-seven oh two from James Peterson to be used for the Buck Thomas plaque.
I'll introduce resolution seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one, resolution accepting donation, designating its use. Second.
Resolution seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Sharpie, seconded by council member Bus, and that is a resolution accepting donation, designating its use. The amount is in the amount of seventy-seven dollars and two cents from James, James Peterson, uh, and to be used for the Dan Buck, Dan Buck Thomas plaque, I'm getting.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
I know.
It was gonna get like that.
All right, that's what it's gonna be used for. Vote by roll call, council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Resolution eighty dash twenty twenty-one, a resolution accepting donation, designating its use.
This is in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. This is the money that was left in that Arlington Sportsman Club. So this is all the money that is left, and they're gonna use it towards replacing that plaque.
I'll make a motion for resolution eighty dash twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Resolution eighty dash twenty twenty-one introduced by council member Thomas, second by council member Morgan. It is a resolution accepting a donation, designating its use. Donations in the amount of eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents from the Arlington Sportsman's Club to be used for replacing the Dan Buck Thomas plaque. Roll call vote, council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yep.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. I'm at the end of the stack.
Yes, we're done.
That was a long. All right, okay, unfinished business, uh, approval denied, fire association requesting increased annual benefit level.
Tim, come on up again.
Okay, Arlington Fire Relief is, uh, asking for taking our pension from seventeen fifty to two thousand. Um, as we discussed earlier, with, uh, the funding is there for it, uh, as for our, our funds that we have invested with this to investors, and, uh, just asking for approval for the two thousand.
Open for discussion.
I would feel more comfortable with it going up in increments like it has in the past over the last few years, so I would, um, I would be comfortable with any two hundred dollars.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Is there? Whoop, excuse me.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Joe.
My, uh, memory serves me correct, I, I think they did do a hundred dollars the last time.
No, it was fifty.
Was it fifty?
Yes.
Okay.
It was eighteen, it was eighteen hundred at our meeting, that made it where it is now.
Well, I mean, I would, I would, I would support a hundred, I don't know.
Okay, is there a second to, is there a second to the motion for eighteen hundred? Is there a second to the motion for eighteen hundred? One more time, is there a second to the motion for eighteen hundred? Okay, that motion dies for lack of second, floor is open for.
I would make a motion that we, for a hundred dollars.
So eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty.
I'll, I'll second that.
Okay, um, further discussion. Motion was made by council member Thomas, second by council member Morgan, to increase the, um, annual benefit level to Arlington Fire Relief Association from the current seventeen fifty up to eighteen fifty. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no? I didn't hear Joe, but I think it was, Joe, did you say?
Joe, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, uh, motion carried, eighteen hundred and fifty dollars.
I think I caught something there.
Mm-hmm, thank you, we're spending your evening with us. Mr. Peckerman.
What's everyone doing?
Good.
Got the longest PVC mic cord on the market over here?
Yeah, you want it. Thank you, John, that's.
Go ahead.
How does it turn?
Michael, you're stretching it to the left.
Yeah, can we put it through the middle just?
Right through here.
Instead of.
A foot or two.
Around John and I, yeah. There we go.
Wipe out the.
We're gonna take out Joe here, too.
Put it on the other side of the screen there, bring it up, that screen, there we go. All right.
There we go.
Right, well, thanks for having me, um, I just wanted to provide a quick update on the water treatment facility rehab that we have been designing over the last three to four months, um, so we are prepared, um, and ready to authorize, um, and get going on biddings for this, so I guess I'm here to get council authorization to do that, we're coming up in November, and then open up bids in December is the plan, so. We have submitted the plans and specifications to the Minnesota Department of Health, um, there are reviews right now. I've been in contact with them, and I expect approval within the next week or so, um, so they have, or will be signing up on the project that's designed. So I, I brought a model, um, that our, our CAD technician put together here of our Revit model, actually, so it's a PDF here, it's cool around, so I thought this was kind of cool, better than scrolling through the plans that they have in front of me, um, and look at a three D model instead. So this is your current plant, so if you recall, um, post improvements don't touch any of the, the structural, so, I mean, most of this, uh, are all the structures here are currently in place, what we're doing is rehabbing the interior part of the plant. Filters right here, the sand filters sit here, detention tank, um, aerator up here, so those are all components that we're, we're looking at rehabilitating. Sand media, media retainer, now it's like a thing, so, um, I really didn't have anything specific to point out here, other than it's kind of cool to show you guys, and this is what we put together, so. This is, this is what we do, so, I mean, we take this model and we, we put it on a two D plan set, so everything that's, there's about fifty pages here, are two D cuts of this model, um, that go on, um, the plans, and we send that to, or the contractors, do that to put a bid price on it, so.
That's cool.
Yep.
That's what we gave the big bucks for like that.
Yes.
Right, that's right, so this is a newer program we just started using about a year ago, um, at Revit. Um, it's a, it's a program they've been using for probably ten, fifteen years, probably more than that, but it's something we just started picking up for doing our water and water treatment facility projects. Um, so all of our mechanical, both electrical, um, engineers, everyone uses this, so it's an interactive model, everyone can share the same model and see everything and coordinate where everything is going, so there's no conflict, so I think it's super, super handy, um, so, yeah, I mean, that's your, that's your plan. It's kind of surprising, you know, if you ever drove by it or looked at it, it's, you know, it's, it's amazing what's all there, you know? You don't see these concrete tanks that are below grade, um, some of these other deeper structures that are all below grade here, the filters sit in, this is all poured concrete in place, it's all in good shape, um, we're just rehabbing, recoating that type of thing, um. This is the backwash holding tank, so all the filter wash water that comes out of here goes into this tank, it's stored and gets pumped to sanitary. So you don't even see that structure, the only, only part that sticks out of the ground is the self-reportion right here, the rest of the full grade, so, a lot there, a lot of infrastructure. So, um, yeah, I guess I'm here to, to get authorization to put this out for bidding, um, so it's an online bid, we post everything through a website called Quest CDN. It's tried and true, uh, commonly called for all contractors to bid on projects and.
I'm kind of thinking out loud here, but I believe we need the resolution to put it out for bid, so council can approve it tonight, and I will type the resolution later. We'll just consider it resolution eighty-one dash.
Oh.
We'll just do it as a resolution tonight, we'll consider it eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one. So I'd ask that the mayor do a roll call, when you vote on putting it out for bids.
Okay, just to outline for those here, too, uh, it looks like, um, tonight to authorize the putting out for bids, and then this is the schedule for the future here with advertising a project on November twelfth, public bid opening on December fourteenth, review of bids of city council December twentieth, bid award contracts, uh, January, sometime in January twenty twenty-two. Construction period to begin in January twenty twenty-two, uh, for the duration of the year, so it's a year-long project.
So is that typical, just having like that short a period of time for bids, and then you start the project, that's so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, even in huge, multi-multi-million dollar projects, usually a contract review, about a month, up to forty-five days, it can also be bid together.
Mm-hmm.
So this one, we're giving them.
Before they start the actual project?
Yes, well, we'll advertise for bidding, we'll have a month to look at it, and put a price together, upload it place, pricing is close. Yep, the Quest CDN program, and then we publicly open bids, we do this right in the conference.
We'll do it here.
Yep, so that'll be, um, you know, an online opening, but public, so anyone can come, maybe the contractors can come and sit in this room and watch us open the bids on the web, there's no awards.
Mm-hmm.
And then from that point, um, there's contracts to be signed, so if this, if the pricing all looks good, and the city wants to proceed, um, we'd look to award, uh, contracts, so there's some agreements to be signed, and usually that takes a couple weeks to kind of process all that stuff with contractor, and then they'd be ready to get going right away in January, but cement review is a big thing, so, I mean, we have about a year construction scheduled on this one, I would say a good, probably half of that time is just gonna be getting materials on site, um, I think a lot of you are probably aware with some of the meantime, materials, um, in the last year or two have been especially bad, um, so right away we work on the twelve shot drawings to make sure all the equipment materials are acceptable, and we approve all that stuff, and then they get going and install it. Um, so end of next year will be kind of the timeline for the new project.
Looks like the engineer's estimate of the cost, a million six oh five, is that correct?
That's correct, so, yeah, um, March, I think, we were here, and I had an estimate of one point five million, I did bump that up by about seven to ten percent, just for, no specific reason, other than the last six months, we've seen basically every bid come in higher than what we expected. We won't know what it is until we open up the bids.
Okay, then we would be, uh, acting, uh, as if we have resolution eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one, hearing?
I'll introduce resolution eighty-one twenty twenty-one, a resolution, um.
Authorizing.
Authorizing, um.
Yeah.
To bid the project.
Correct.
I'll second.
Okay, um, council member, uh, Batchelor introduced resolution eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one, second by council member Thomas, and it is, uh, authorizing the water treatment facility rehab project to move forward with the soli.
Bid advertisement.
Advertising bids, solicitation of bids. Okay, everyone understand? And we'll go with roll call vote, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Batchelor.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Council member Bus.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution eighty-one dash twenty twenty-one is adopted. It was worth stringing that people.
I need the cable back.
Just to see the.
We could just spend hours going through this, right? I wanted to give you a taste.
Let's save us money, I think, yeah, efficient software like that, that, you know, you don't have to.
Contracts love it, no request to stop them from being as soon as they're awarded, so they like it too, so we could see it. All right.
Thanks, Jamie. Item twenty-one, approved denied, update to city personnel policy, section eight point four, overtime compensatory time.
Jamie, would you like to come on up? I've highlighted the recommendation from the ambulance department to change the overtime, uh, so when overtime is calculated for members of the ambulance department, much like it is with the police department, so you will see the change in pink.
Yeah, one of the things that we were having an issue with is a couple of our paramedics, they do max out on their hours, so they max out at thirty-six hours a week, that they're doing their ALS coverage, um, they do pick up night shifts and on call. And what we have to do is we have to watch those hours very, very carefully, because right now with the, the city policy, we can't allow them to go over forty. So with that, sometimes it happens, where I have to remove a paramedic off the schedule from the EMT unit, and so this is one of the ways that we like to kind of help with that issue.
That's, that's making us lose money, because if we have a paramedic on, we're gonna be able to be charged more for your service versus the other.
Correct. So we want those.
So we want, we want a paramedic on.
On call.
As much as possible.
You might have so much revenue as well, ALS to an BLS call, we get.
Yes.
So, it's a good thing.
Yeah. So it's just, for what I read, it's just like. So, it's just, for what I read, it's just like you're going to give them forty-eight hours a week versus only allowing them forty to work for us?
Correct. Uh-huh.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
But you're right, that's no over time.
Did you make the motion, Adam?
Yeah, I was just going to make the motion to accept the change to the ambulance department compensation.
Motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Batchra to approve the update in city personnel policy, section eight point four, overtime compensatory time. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close no. Motion carried.
You saved the meeting, okay? We're already working two, three. So, that just took some lead out right there.
Item twenty...
More money. I mean, the cement, the ambulance is going to make more money. So, I mean, honestly, it pays for itself in the long run and it's...
Item twenty-two, approved, deny ambulance committee recommendation creating five point eight full-time equivalent positions in the ambulance department, two paramedics and three EMT positions.
So, Jamie handed out updated information. So, what I have on the screen is not accurate what was in the packet. So, look at whatever piece of paper is in front of you and Jamie will go through it.
I, I did also try to email it to Joe as well.
Joe, check your email for the updated information from Jamie.
If not, I can go through it for you too, Joe. There is a, a small change down at the proposal side of things. So, first, when we had met, the initial decision was to have instead of the sixteen hours on-call restricted at the bottom there, we actually had twenty-eight. I did some research in regards to others around services and regards to how time is on somewhere. I, I decided to change it to sixteen because I figured that extra twelve hours on-call requirement per week, that would give us another sixty hour week for medics and EMTs. And I kind of don't want to ruin the handle of whole times.
Yep.
So, Joe, just to let you know, down at the bottom of the proposal, where it says the zero point eight FTE work week would consist of two twelve-hour shifts in-house pay time, one eight-hour shift in-house pay time, and sixteen hours on-call restricted per week. I changed that to sixteen instead of the twenty-eight. But then, I also added in here additionally, each point eight would be required to work an additional twelve-hour on-call restricted shift a month.
So, that will actually save us some money too.
Absolutely.
So, this will help. Yeah, this, I ran the numbers for all five and I thought that's really high.
Yes, it is.
But with these readjusted, that readjusted schedule, this makes it, yeah, this makes it balance out.
A little, yeah, easier. So, yes, ultimately, they'd be paid thirty-two hours in-house, sixteen hours on-call and the requirement for an additional twelve-hour on-call shift per month.
Thank you.
Yep.
Much better.
Mm-hmm.
Joe, did you get a chance to look at this?
I was just looking for it and I wasn't, I wasn't finding it.
When did you send it, Jamie?
At the beginning of our meeting, the beginning of the budget meeting.
Jamie sent it about five-thirty.
Okay, maybe I got a refresh or something.
Did it go out up here?
Check spam. Two more today from you that went in there.
I'm in the spam all of a sudden. Check your spam box, Joe, just in case. Maybe Jamie's in the spam.
So, what does the restricted mean when you say restricted?
The on-call shifts. So, like, right now, we, our schedule is from six A to six P and six P to six A. Our on-call is basically from six PM to six AM overnight.
Looking through that.
It was just added back when we did the part-time, the point-six position to change the on-call actually to restricted because we have a eight-minute response time. So, it's just, it means that anybody within that eight minutes needs to be there when you get rolling type of thing. So, it's more so restrictive that they have that eight-minute response time. So, that's...
So, okay, so what you're saying is that if they're an ototoner, they need to stay overnight.
They have to stay.
Yeah. They have to stay.
Also, no ambulance. Me guys, we're so excited.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the proposal for the change of the restricted on-call per week.
Already had your name in there.
Look at that.
Yeah.
Do you already have your name in there too?
No, I did not. I just said John. Already written out.
All right, motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Sharpie to approve the ambulance committee recommendation creating five point eight full-time equivalent positions in the ambulance department, of which two would be paramedics and three EMT positions. Again, Thomas made the motion, second by Sharpie. Any further discussion?
I did try to resend it again to Joe. I tried.
Well, we could probably break it down from it was actually just matter of...
Yeah. Right, and that's why I went through.
Didn't change anything.
Other than the on-call.
Put your microphone on.
It is. Sorry.
Okay, are we ready to vote then?
I think so.
Joe? Is Joe?
Yep, I'm good.
He's good.
All in favor, signify this. Say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carried. Item twenty-three, approved, deny ambulance committee recommendation on new starting wage for EMRs at thirteen dollars slash six twenty-five on-call, effective eleven to twenty-one.
Can I, can I state there too for the record, that's a reduction, dropping the proposal here is to drop the EMR pay. The idea behind this and the two prior proposals is what we're building there and the cultural changes that we're taking. For example, the capture of lost revenue and then some other things. The idea of the full-time staff and that they can build a better skill set. And so, we're no longer looking at it, put it in the back of the ambulance and run to the hospital quick. Do our procedures and be fair and honest and give our customers far better service. But alongside of that, one of the most important things that Jamie had pointed out the other day was that being on our squad now is a privilege. It's not a right. We have to earn our spots. Just like each of us here, you're good members of the council. It's a privilege. I'm sure you feel that when you serve. We do the same in our profession. And it is a, something you earn down there now. So, they should not be paid the same as an EMT. Now, I know some of these individuals might take it a little rough in the beginning, but we never guaranteed them an actual contract that says, we will be giving you so much work. We did have a contract that said you will become an EMT and that has yet to be fulfilled. Now, like Jamie was saying, these great strides here on, on our mentorship program.
It also gives an incentive to give us...
There you go. No separate. So, that's why we figured it'd be fair.
Yeah.
And it saves a little bit of revenue for us.
So, this will be effective tomorrow if council approves it tonight.
Thank you, Jamie.
EMRs and EMTs were both getting seventeen dollars an hour when they were out on a call, but EMRs do not have the same level of training. They haven't passed the test that the EMTs are required to pass.
Well, I'm, I'll make a motion. We accept the changes to the pay for the EMRs.
Motion by council member Thomas?
Joe?
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 So, so maybe just for payroll ease, we might want to do it on a pay period?
Yeah.
Right? So, I don't know how hard it would be.
Today is the first.
Okay.
Did anybody work today?
Yeah. We do have, so the next pay period starts...
Saturday.
I mentioned...
Do we have any EMRs on today? I think it's probably the next pay period.
Before, we have another one.
I think it's a...
Yeah.
So, we're good with that?
Start on the next.
Next pay period.
It gives us time to get this whole process started until we're at a place where we're going to have a meeting with the ARM owners, bring them in, have a discussion. They have like Jamie said, set their dates for the EMTs. So...
Okay.
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 So, then that'd be effective at the beginning of the next pay period. Is that correct? All right. So, you've all heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carried. All right, thank you, Joe.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Item twenty-four, approved, deny cemetery committee recommendation for application for cemetery monument permit. I think we've discussed this.
We have.
Quite a mo...
This is just for our record.
Just for the...
So, that we have a record.
Make the motion to approve the permit.
Matt, was that you?
Yep.
Motion by council member Batchra, second by council member Sharpie to approve the cemetery committee recommendation for application for the cemetery monument permit. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Close no. Motion carried. Item twenty-five, approved, deny cemetery committee recommendation allocate five percent of plot and columbarium sales to fund two oh eight, which is a cemetery perpetual fund, and ninety-five percent into fund two oh seven, which is cemetery operating fund.
Our cemetery fund two oh seven, we are levying every year because there's not enough money in there. That's our general operating fund where we pay the lawn mowing, maintenance of the cemetery. We had a discussion at that, at the cemetery committee. The recommendation was to go to the lowest amount possible. Right now, we're putting about sixty percent into that perpetual fund and only forty into our operating fund for the cemetery. I had done some research before the meeting. It looks like typical was five to fifteen percent should go into your perpetual fund. That's when we're expanding our cemetery, future maintenance down the road, buying more land. We already have...
Columbarium.
Columbarium to buy another columbarium. The decision was made to go with the lowest amount possible. I reached out to the League of Minnesota Cities and actually, we wouldn't have to put any money into the perpetual fund. We could put all one hundred percent into the operating fund. But, we had made the recommendation between that five and fifteen percent to go with the lowest amount. So, the recommendation of the cemetery committee would be the five percent into the perpetual fund, which has quite a healthy balance. And ninety-five percent of those plot sales into the operating fund. There had been some discussion at the cemetery committee about raising those plot prices. Again, we just did it last year because we're still not making enough money to, we're not balancing our budget maintaining our cemetery. I, I know we want to provide the service, but we do want to break even. We don't want to make money on the cemetery, but we want to bring in enough money to care for the cemetery.
Trace yourself on business.
So, we're not raising anything. We're just changing where we're putting that money that comes in.
Happy with what we have.
Yes, they are. I have gotten no complaints.
John, man.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion. For what, what is the motion for?
To put ninety-five percent into the operating and five percent into the perpetual fund.
Perpetual, okay. I make that motion.
It's a good motion. I'll second it.
Thanks, Michelle.
Motion by council member Batchra, uh, Thomas, second by council member Batchra. Motion by council member Thomas, second by council member Batchra. To approve the cemetery committee recommendation, allocate five percent of plot into the columbarium sales to fund two oh eight, cemetery perpetual fund, and ninety-five percent into fund two oh seven, cemetery operating fund. Further discussion?
I think the only thing from the meeting was there is a big misconception when you purchase the burial lot that not all four hundred dollars of that goes to take care of your retirement forever. At that rate, sixty percent, you know, that is going to the future.
That makes sense.
And I think a lot of citizens that I talked with, that they didn't, they didn't know that we were preparing for...
The future.
When we need to expand and we weren't covering our base to maintain.
To keep it maintained.
We don't have to worry about that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close no. Motion carried. Item twenty-six, Arledazzle presentation. Arledazzle, you go ahead with that.
There's some information in front of you that was presented to me by the Arledazzle committee late this afternoon. It includes the parade route, the five K route. And then, there's a list of requests. It had the wrong date on. So, this is actually for December fourth of this year. Uh, Mike is here to go through the request and you can ask him any questions.
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Mike Stone, director of Arledazzle. In front of you is a list of requests. I apologize for the date. I did resend it after realizing I sent it over. These are just kind of the same thing. Just year after year, we come to you and ask you for these requests, except for last year, unfortunately. So, first off is the parade route. There is a map attached, same as always. Well, the last few years anyway. We're starting on the west side of town and running down to the city ship on the east and the main. We know it in there and Kirby's been pretty good about taking care of this, checking for the hanging tree limbs along that parade route. We also asked to close main at twelve PM on Saturday. I just put no parking signs and such for pre-paide activities. And we'll have our five K that afternoon. And then, closing the streets from main to al, to the alley on Fourth, Third. As you can see, I'm now clearing all off.
Mm-hmm.
Placement, uh, the permission to place portable fire pits on main street. These are portable. They're only there in the mid-afternoon until after the parade's over. They're picked up, cleaned up. We've been doing that for a number of years. The use of the main street parking lot for Arlington Fire Department's fish camp and then also the Lidle Theater parking lot. And if icy, if main street could be sanded prior to the parade. And request the use or the available of the orange cones for the five K. Kirby's been good about giving us those to use. And also the barricades. And typically, he gives us these on Friday afternoon and we set those by the parking lot. And then, trash cans or just some plastic barrels that got down in the shed, we use those and then we'll get those all emptied out and put in one spot. So, we help Kirby bring those back. Um, this is kind of old. I should have rewrote this. Request of the twelve porta potty units. Back in the day, Kirby used to request those, order them. I'll take care of that part of it.
So, we can take this off the list, period?
Yeah, let's take it off the list.
Good.
I've already contacted.
I was going to say, you should do that on your own anyway.
Yeah, they, they've been contacted. It's...
Okay, take it off the list.
And then, weight prohibition of public consumption of the parade route. And police assistance during the festivities. And then, use of city personnel. That's for getting the barricades, the cones, the barrels and such. And then, Kirby's been good about helping us Saturday afternoon, running the street lights when the train arrives to sander it. So, most of his work is on Friday. I know sometimes they choose to clean up a little bit on Sunday morning. We pick everything up, empty barrels, stuff like that. And then, help on the streets later sometimes if there's anything left, so...
So, the Lidle Theater lot, that's our lot? Or is that a private lot?
One is the Lidle Theater. Oh. That's, that's a s...
City.
That's a city parking lot, one across from the bakery. Yep.
No, no.
No, the Lidle. He's talking about that little one around the corner.
That is, uh...
That's a good question. I don't know.
I don't know if that's...
That's a city, man. I believe it's a city.
That is our little lot?
Is maybe, are maybe a few of the spots reserved for apartment dwellers close by?
Yeah.
That would be the only restriction. Other than that, it's...
Actually, no, I think it's just a handicap. I had one or two handicaps. It's not designated for any apartments.
Okay.
This is Kirby's plaza.
Okay.
My question with the, um, with the license thing is, I, given that I do like the licensing as well here, I have not come across any statutes that would require me to...
I have not come across any statutes that would require me to allow that, so I'm just curious, would that be more of a police matter, or how do we, how have we approached that in the past? Cause I'm not familiar.
We just approved it.
We just approved it, yeah.
No, I figured, I'm just curious.
I'll ma- I'll make a motion to approve all the requests for the Arledazzle.
Well, I, I have a question. So when, when you say the, uh, on parade route, the, uh, public consumption, are you packing just main street, or are you packing the whole?
Main street. Main street.
Whole parade route? Because I'm here, the whole parade route is all around town.
Parade route is main street.
You're looking at the five K one problem?
Oh.
Yes.
The parade road is.
So you're just talking from?
From highway five to.
To number nine.
At least the highway five.
Straight down.
All the way down?
Yep.
I still make a motion.
I just wanted to clarify.
That's good, that's good.
I still make a motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by council member Thomas, seconded by council member Batcher to approve the list of requests from the Arledazzle committee, uh, one being struck, and that one is the fourth one from the end, request of twelve porta-potties. Uh, that will be taken care of, not by city staff.
Not by city.
So, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. A lot of people looking forward to it after, after taking off one a year.
Two black cells.
Any committee, any committee updates that we haven't talked about?
Do you wanna say anything else about the cemetery? I think we kinda covered it all.
Besides my mind, John Veyman, that's gonna help on this meeting.
Is it Vital?
I think we covered everything throughout.
Open discussion, anything? All right, motion to adjourn.
My motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who had the second?
Craig.
Craig. Motion by council member Thomas, seconded by council member Bus to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no? Motion is adjourn- or meeting adjourned eight oh-